Hi, this is July twenty fifth, the Situate School Committee meeting to order at six oh one. Oh, sorry. Oh, okay. Right.
It's on this camera.
Oh, yeah, your, no, Carrie's not me. Okay, the Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner. Even when there is disagreement, we value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all participants to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. In response to Governor Baker's declaration of a public health emergency and the related emergency effect of the date of March twelve twenty twenty, the kind of Situate public meetings shall be remotely until further notice. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted following the meeting. A couple of comments will be available by Zoom. Community members can also email me and Brindlin and send out all of those questions. And we will start with public comment.
Ms. Brindlin, you have no raised hands, virtually.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so let's see, we have our first presentation. It is with Megan Summers, who is the chairperson of the status Situate Commission on Disability.
Much for having me here and allowing me to present back some of your collaborations and your play with the families of the schools. I also just a little bit about the commission itself. I'm not sure, like, what do we know about it? And so we're a board of volunteers that's appointed by the select board, just around the six of us, and we all could bring in various backgrounds and identities to to report these to the board. And so it's been, it's had really wonderful, wonderful collaboration with the schools over the last, I don't know, ten years now. So I just wanted to highlight some of those things that we've done together. So we have purchased C Pen readers, which are, they're portable scanning devices that will allow print and text to be read aloud when you, when you just run that through the text of a book. Donated money for accessible features to the Montecito playground. Donated funds to purchase developmental appropriate books for the high school media room. Provided equipment to update the motor rooms for Montecito and other elementary schools. Provided architectural support and guidance for school facilities, such as the new athletic field and the new middle school. And also, it was very just enough to allow us to participate in a podcast. The podcast will even highlight some of the intersectionality between disability, disability world and diversity world. Diversity, diversity, physical, diversity is a part of diversity. So that's a beautiful way to sort of highlight some of the things that we have been doing. Then I also just wanted to briefly touch upon, there's a Massachusetts Office for Disability Grant that's going to be open soon. And this is a grant that's awarded by M O D to support capital improvements designed to for improving programmatic access and to remove barriers. And so this year they have two and a half million dollars to allocate. And last year, they awarded thirty three of these grants across the Commonwealth. And so it's in a really great position to be able to apply for these grants because each community has to meet certain requirements as far as having a transition plan, having other items in place, the A B A coordinator and things like that. So you'll apply for the grant, which has all the things necessary. So if there's ever anything that that we were due to assist in applying for that grant, I know that there was talk of updating the preschool playgrounds, and those playgrounds are still crazy. So if there's anything with that that we can help out with, we are more than happy to assist in any way that we can, if we need. And then just some other news, not necessarily school related, but just some things that we've been doing that I think are really amazing. Somebody purchased a front wheelchair, which is an altering wheelchair. If you go on trails, you can go on the beach, you can go all over. And that's being held in the library thing, so somebody can go with a library card and check out the wheelchair. It's super easy, you can put it into your vehicle and just take that anywhere that you need to, you need to go. And we've also purchased peach wheelchairs. So I think we have three now that are available. The white ones were used down to the peaches, and those have been used very widely. But just something to sort of, kind of, iterate on some things out there available. And we're really, you know, excited to be able to offer that. And we are also doing an accessibility awareness plan. This is the third year that we've held that. And we're going to hold it here at the high school this year, which is fantastic, it's great. It'll be a wonderful facility, the whole place. And that's where we bring in a few dozen agencies and state administrators to come in and interact directly with the residents to talk about the services they offer and the supports that are out there for folks. And we usually have a bunch of high school people volunteer too, which is a lot of them. That's what we have going on. And I also just want to let folks know that we are only here to be helpful. If there's ever anything, if it's a question about A B A access issues, anything like that, we are. My phone number is on the website, so please feel free to reach out and, and we, and we'll work together.
Comments or questions, I guess. Thank you for all the work you've done. How, can you just tell a little bit about how you're financed and how you're funded and how that kind of works in schools and the parts of town?
Sure, so we get a small budget from the town. And then we also are the recipients of all the community help programs that are plugged into the town. So those funds are used for, they're just the betterment of the community. And it can be within schools, it can be with the town, it can be around the ramp of the gazebo. So we use to, in that, a lot of the things I'm hearing that I talked about, we can fund it through those, through those funds. You can imagine in summer, it can get back a lot for you.
Great, and I guess, I guess, I'd just like to understand how things work. I know that we're actually in the process of building a new school theoretically. Are you guys, at what point did your department or your community at all get that to make your debt?
So ideally, we love to be involved at any stage of the process. We would go get blueprints all the time. And that's usually when we did the middle school, they found, you know, we can present on the middle school appeals and show some blueprints and then we would take those and look at them and just make sure that things are, are A B A. I have a member of our commission is also works at the M O D and knows, like, the ins and outs, everything from back, all the regulations for everything A B A related. So he would look at the blueprint and know, okay, this is, this looks good here. You know, sometimes it looks good on paper, but then when it goes to be implemented, you know, something gets tweaked a little bit and starts stopping your compliance. So we are happy to be, to be accessible throughout that entire process of from blueprints to walkthroughs to, you know, final before you sign off on any other projects.
I think it's helpful to know that, I don't think I knew that we had, I guess I, I hear about it, but like, know exactly how you guys are integrated, but it's helpful to know you have, you say six committee members? That you're there to support the town and the school.
And it's all, you know, three volunteer groups do it, so it's, you know, kind of a little concert, you know, sort of have another set of eyes just to make sure that things are, and compliance.
Great, thank you.
Um, I think this is the first time we've had somebody with disabilities present. So I have just a question about the accessibility awareness. Do you have a date?
That is October twenty second.
I feel wonderful about it, get those to come in and be right there. It happens, I have seen people can try them out and it's been really pleasant. We had two in the past and then our third one was, we had everything all inflated and ready to go for like March nineteenth of twenty twenty one. Yeah, everything on hold, so this is our first one, we're supposed to go with it, we're very excited to be back.
Yeah, it's great, I agree, I think this is just such an intersection. Good to have you here because it's awesome to see students and families and it's all connected. They're proud, of course, and so we're all the same team. I'm sure kids and families are glad to be here. This is where.
Dr. Over, I'm going to skip over those. We should do that. My dog, over, that's laughing. Um, this is where, I'll, I'll, like, tell it to a chair.
Oh, my goodness.
All right. Thank you. So Mr. and the Commissioner, I just want to thank you very much. You know, Dr. Over just told me, meeting you and hearing great things you're doing. I was actually on Montecito today with Dr. Over and he showed me some of the things that we have, the commission have produced. Thank you, it's being put to use, it's very much appreciated. Gates, what's up with your point with the new school coming? I'm sure we'll be looking at feasibility study for it, what teams are going to make sure we have the best school possible for all of you. Thank you for the partnership, that's so many great community partnerships here, this is just one more example of another one that's great. Having a face with millions and sharing our great work with the board, thank you.
Dr. Over, did you want to add?
Oh, sure, I just wanted to thank Megan and her, someone.
Maybe muted, if you can hear me?
No, I don't think so.
Nope, Michelle, you're just pretty low, we got to get closer to that mic.
Sorry, okay. I just wanted to thank Megan and the commission, it was a really nice surprise when they called last year and they asked, you know, they wanted to add to the, the new library at the high school. And we were able to purchase books for kids with more severe disabilities so they could feel included. And then this year, they were asking about helping to update our motor rooms, which are where we provide our occupational therapy and physical therapy. We were able to buy core things, thanks for generosity and they've been a pleasure to work with. And I'm definitely gonna follow up on the grant as we talked about with the playground. Thank you again, Megan and your commission.
Sounds great, Michelle came to our last meeting too and stayed through the whole. Thanks, Dr. Over. I know this was a little choppy on our end, but I'll try to sort of hit a few points that you said just in case people missed it. But I think she said that they were able to work on motor rooms through these, working with the commission on disabilities and buy books for inclusivity for students as well. And then, of course, the grant piece, so thank you, thank you. If anybody needs anything, okay, so just reach out, please, we're always happy to answer any questions, we'll answer them.
Yeah, I think neurodiversity is like a component of, you know, that is also pleasingness and something that, you know, do more work on too, so it's exciting for, for some of these years, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm Pithlo Maguire with the U S State Department Youth Ambassador Program Exchange. Good evening, everybody, happy summer, hope you're safe. Well, we have a wonderful student with us tonight, Kelly Grantina, who's joined by her parents. We asked her to come and share a little bit of her experience because it's extraordinary. If you want to come and join her parents. We would welcome you, happy to you know. So Kelly took, took part in the U S State Department's Youth Ambassador Program. Youth Ambassador is sponsored by the U S Department of State Bureau of Educational Cultural Affairs. It's administered by World Learning and the program aims to promote mutual understanding, respect and collaboration between people in the U S and other countries of the region. Ms. Grantina learned the program by looking for things to do. She wanted to get more involved, very interested in service, is pursuing for Spanish language studies and, and looked at this program and applied and participated remotely because of COVID last summer. Loved the experience, wanted to go in person, began the reapplication process, which is very rigorous. In October twenty twenty one, was able to secure a spot visiting Argentina and Chile in person. This is not a school-sponsored program, but a wonderful program that we're happy to support her in. It's a competitive application process where they select one hundred twenty students and educators to participate. It's fully funded by the State Department, so nationally, that's, that's the group that gets selected. And she'll tell you a little bit about the trip. What's super interesting to us as, for the administrators that work with Kelly is there's a huge connection to the Global Pathways Program that we spoke about this spring. And so we've invited Kelly to participate in the pilot of our Global Studies Pathway for the upcoming school year to be part of that graduation designation program. The Student Ambassador Program is an incredible experience that could become one of those types of ways to fulfill the culminating experience, similar to a school-sponsored exchange trip. This is one that she took the initiative to find on her own, but could fulfill that. The exchange to Argentina and Chile is primarily conducted in Spanish, furthering her Spanish language studies. That's impressive, it's even part of the application process. Kelly plans to pursue the syllable literacy this upcoming school year and will share this experience with more teachers and students so that we know here at S H S that this is an option and that other kids can take part in it. And for those who are interested in learning more about the pilot program and the connection back into school, Kate, who learned more language and vocabulary in business, will be connecting with students as well to take part in the introduction to the pathways programs. And there'll be more information from both them and myself who is leading us as well. But again, Kelly did this work on her own, it's her own initiative as a student learner. And we put work to be asked when a student is in the driver's seat of her own learning. And knowing Kelly, it's so exciting to be able to have her on our team as we've gone to develop these pathways at the high school, where she can share her experiences and she's able to share more about the activities she participated in the exchange and how it's helped support her educational career goals. I'm gonna turn it over to Kelly, I'll share my screen.
Let's see. Thank you. Yep. Thank you, Dr. Maguire, and I just thank all the administrators and my teachers, most of your door head, for supporting my, my journey on this program as well as letting me use this tool. So this, Dr. Maguire, kind of explained the Ambassador's Program. I learned about it through independent research during COVID. I was obviously feeling stuck and I wanted to travel and get out, run an exchange program and I came upon the State Department programs. And not only do they have the Ambassador's Program, they have a lot of other programs that send kids to different parts of the world, to different kids that are interested in like, I know we have Mandarin here and that's a semi new language that's a trip, but they send kids to China on a cultural trip as well. So Dr. Maguire, since the application process was long, but they got to my teachers, I had a lot of help, like Ms. Hogs, Vera Brady, my Spanish teachers, my history teachers, they all helped me along with this process. So I participated in this program summer twenty twenty one personally and it looked very different. It was, I think, eight hours of meetings on Zoom and like, meeting with your host family via FaceTime and chatting with the other students on WhatsApp. So I was able to do it in person this year. So before you leave for your country, there's can travel to Brazil, Chile, Argentina, Paraguay, mainly all the South American countries. You spend two days in Washington, D.C., where you meet with the State Department employees from those countries, where you're basically prepped on things you should be aware of, things not to say. But you also learn a lot about the political, economic and social state of those countries. So that's what we did in D.C. and that's a picture in D.C. And then we travel, I traveled with twenty five other students to Santiago, Chile. And there, we spent two days in Santiago exploring nearby towns and also spending our time with the embassy to get ready for our home stays. After my two days in Santiago, I traveled to Coloma, Chile, which is a town about two hours north of our city, two hours north of Santiago, so it's in the middle of Chile, there's literally nothing around it. So this was, I was, this was a part of my experience I was most worried for, but it ended up being most meaningful and it's a part I miss the most. So all the host families had two things in common, from me and the twelve other students that went here. They all lived in Coloma and they all had modern, more students who attended Leno de Narra de Vinci, which is a Leno de Narra de Vinci school in Coloma. And it's, it's the most exclusive private school in the area, which our means we would not think it was that. My host father, like many of the other fathers pictured up there, was a coal miner, worked seven days on, seven days off. And my mother was a hairdresser, who was not working at the time. Like most of the families in the area, they saved all their money, sent their daughter to this private school in hopes that one day she'll be able to graduate, pass her English test and go to university in Santiago, which most students in Chile that are from Santiago, working in a private school, don't have opportunity to do. Every day I attend school, prepare, we go to classes, participate in cultural and social activities, from dancing with the kids to English class, art classes, cultural fairs. These are some pictures of the school. Somewhere I definitely go, hope to go back and visit to see the students again. The girl on the left is like any service program, you become close with certain students. She was my favorite, well, they're all my favorite, but that's Augustine. She's the one I'm closest with, she texts me every night. She's in third grade, but she's just starting to learn English, hopes that one day she'll be able to take English classes, pass their, like, their version of syllable literacy and attend university. So then, also when we were at our homestay, we visited poverty-stricken schools outside of Coloma or inside. And outside of Coloma, if it's five miles, it's like an hour long ride, it's a road or windy and long. These schools, one of the, one we attended on the right middle picture, that's with the, yeah, those are, that was a native Chilean school, so those kids still practiced their native culture and they weren't really exposed to English, computers, anything that we see in school today. And then the other school was just a school in a poverty-stricken area that had been funded by the government, so it was basically two mobile homes almost, and that was made to a school where there, it didn't go into high school, so it made it till eighth grade, eighth grade is, what shocked me the most was in eighth grade is when these students started learning logarithms, something we learned a lot earlier, which I haven't really touched since fourth grade. But these, these, and you're not touching there now, but it was very shocking. It was sad to learn about these kids, but it was also inspiring to see how much they, they spoke no English, but they wanted to, when they really wanted to leave their community. If they're lucky enough, they can travel to, if their parents can afford it, a private school in Coloma and then hopefully to university. The reality is that most of these kids are not able to do that. So in Chile, we also experienced a lot of culture. We visited the largest open copper mine in the world. The mine's still operating today, but every few years, it takes over a little more of the city of Coloma, striving to build towns. So we visited a town, I'm not trying to pronounce it, but if you look up like Chile abandoned towns or everywhere, which environmental hazardous impacts and then the mines would collapse on the town every few years. So I think the most recent abandoned town was in two thousand fifteen. My host family talked a lot about how if their daughter, if they can't get their daughter Naya, my host sister, to go to university and if she was to stay in Coloma forever, her kids, her grandkids probably would have to move inwards to march to the neighborhoods further from the mines. Something that was also weird or different to me was always wearing a mask outside just because the air is so bad. You think you're in this natural beautiful place, but the mining is everywhere, which is really sad. At our homestays on the weekend, we visited an outdoor hostel, which is something I've never done before, and we had the Atacama Desert and the Agus Mountains, and that's a picture on the left. That was my favorite park, we were outside all day. Elevation sickness got to you, but we took the medicine, it was year eleven, it wasn't too bad. And then we also, during our time in Santiago, we visited Valpresso and Lovina del Mar, which are on the Pacific, on the coast of Chile, right outside of Santiago. And that was like our tourist part of the trip, which was very fun because I didn't think we'd be doing something like that. Then when I traveled to Argentina, we traveled back to Santiago, Santiago, Upfront, Zares, where we met up with the thirteen Ambassador, she went to Argentina for her homestay. And here, we met with the U S Department's Embassy in Argentina and their economy is very correct right now. Like, one of the most interesting things I learned in Argentina was that their currency exchange from U S dollars or from any pesos or anything to Argentinian pesos changes every day, which is really interesting to see the economy in action. We also spent time at A F S, which is, which is, A F S like hosts and sponsors exchange trips for kids all over the world. And there were our ten country partners who coordinated like our flights and everything with the State Department and our hostels and our stays. And we talked about ways to bring positive change in our communities, which is a big part of this program is when you come back, you have to implement a new service project. So last year, I did a book drive and I collected books about diversity and equity, children's books, to donate to local boys and girls clubs. This year, I'm not very sure what I'm gonna do, but I'll figure it out. The thing that impacted was my traveling as well as being remote, but especially to travel and spend time with these other youth, I learned a great depth about the Chilean culture and confirmed my belief that we really, all youth across the globe really aren't the same. We all hope for, to live peacefully with each other, we all care about education, we all have interest in each other's cultures. Working in global affairs and studying international relations is something I've always wanted to do, especially here at Situate, like the classes I've taken and things. So this trip really solidified my desire. And I was able to make friendships. These were true my best friends on the trip with American students from diverse backgrounds, people that I've never met or feel like I would never meet in Situate, from all over the country, who share my passion for global affairs and peace justice. I'm actually very lucky, someone are coming to Situate next week, which will be fun. And conclusion, well, I experienced some home sickness and some altitude sickness at first. When I returned from a long trip and many light overs, I was so happy that I experienced it, but I was so sad to come home. I was sad, sad to leave my homestay community in Coloma because I felt like they had welcomed me in. And I was also sad to leave my friends and adult mentors. I feel like after last year, when I returned home from my virtual program, I was able to become more of a leader and advocate in that classroom. And I'm sure that my time in person will allow me to do the same. Again, I'm grateful for all my teachers and administration for helping me along with this process. Also for the State Department for a laugh or for having such opportunities for youth that I would never known about. I feel not many in Situate people in Situate know about it, it's such a great opportunity that we should take advantage of. Thank you. Any questions?
So do you think, what a great experience?
Yeah.
I think, I, for me, I, I think it's an amazing experience for you to kind of seek this out and find something that kind of fits your passion and follow through, I think that's what's so important. By my, to the schools where there's, where you've been here, you know, in that sort of collaboration as well. So I thank you, it's really just all the help you've given. For your, your, your mission. Well, you're gonna be a senior.
Yeah.
I think you can add back to the community another year in our school with your family. So I think as you said, use some of your experience and, and kind of, school. Thank you for your effort and your issue and all that sort of stuff. Congratulations. Some of the best presentations we see, I have the students coming back and showing like how they responded to some like the service trips or a lot of the UN and the technical programs that they do. Sort of made some, right, those who save for finding this out, taking the opportunity. I had two questions, I just, if there's anything else. If you're getting like a program like this, the first time, is it easy for you to do it or is it a secondary risk?
I think, well, you have just mentioned like a transfer from things, like you've been a member of the CHP, I was like a thirty five. They look for your course load, Spanish knowledge, that you're taking classes and everything. Kind of have to do with international affairs wherever you're going. I think, I applied, when I applied, there was probably not as many kids applying because it was, it was announced that it would be virtual that year. I'm not sure, after Selenta's semifinals, you have an interview in English and then a conversational, like interview in the language of a country that you're traveling to. I think if you do it one summer and the administrators of the program know you, like the person I interviewed with this past winter was one of my adult years, the year before, so she knew me. And if you're able to bring into your application the second year, like, this is what I've done because of my experience and it is definitely helpful. So if you could start doing it, summer, bring it to sophomore year, you can do it for three summers. So if you could start doing it, summer, bring it to sophomore year, you can do it for three summers.
And at least that you were in a team with some of the other students. Could you have a chance to meet the other kids in the program and kind of compare and contrast?
Okay. Yes, my, there were thirteen students in Argentina. There are, some of them were my best friends through silk business next week. The time we spent in Ar- in Buenos Aires and Santiago together, it was a constant. So they had a very different experience. Like they didn't have a school that they went to every day, but each other using different schools every day. Um and I know the Brazilian, or the ambassadors going to Brazil went at the same time as um I did. I know they went to different schools every day too, so I think it depends on your eight country partners and to the state department partners.
Thank you. Yeah, congratulations. This is awesome.
Any of, any other classmates that inspired you to like a program like that?
I am, um, yeah, Julie is a good one. I have a few classes. I know she wanted to, um, she speaks Mandarin, takes a Mandarin class. She had applied for, I think she'd gotten into the program going to, it was going to China and Russia, but they canceled that this year or it's online or it's postponed. So I know she was very interested in it. Yes, like I do Model UN, so I have a lot of friends who are interested in global affairs and things as well.
Thank you so much. Thanks for playing. Thank you for coming Monday and evening and for all of you.
So congratulations as well, Kelly. I guess my first question was, did you mention at the beginning you wanted to get out of that with the because of all of your father or?
Don't answer that. That was very hard.
So off the record, we'll talk. Um just the, yeah, I I think everyone's mentioned it. Um I want to take the opportunity to see um what you made about um was, thank you for allowing it to school. I can't think of any better learning than real life. I think um being a role model, your courage, and all the characters we see in the greatest leaders, being exemplified even with courage of going to a country. You mentioned you were more done, most worried about a certain visitor was the most important, right? Go out there alone. Um and you also modeled what we need very much, right, in the whole community. Going to another country, meeting new people, communicating, right? Language barrier, didn't matter. You still love to go there, you know, do you really know what's up. I'm just pulling away by it. Um I've never heard of it either, so I learned something, you know, learn as and as a whole. So thank you for teaching me and continue to make work and and hope inspires other people in schools and else to go and do things that school doesn't have to offer for us to support you. And I know that that, you know, Doug McGuire, her team, the teachers that hope to do this because we can't do anything great or that was the last problem. Nice job.
Sure.
Can I get a picture?
Yeah.
Just a, a counter and uh water.
Model UN next? Yes. I am pleased to introduce the co-advisor from Model UN, who's with us virtually to talk about her trips.
Hi, uh, I hope you can all hear me. Um I appreciate you letting me zoom in. I've been dealing with some family issues, so I've been kind of crazy. So um I actually love going after Kelly because first of all, I want to sign up for that trip. And then secondly, um we're very lucky to have Kelly as our secretary, um as one of our officers for Model UN um this year. Um and just to sort of give you a a little bit of background, as as you know, we have typically gone on two trips um per year for the last, I don't know, fifteen or so years. Um and COVID really did a number on the, on our program since um since we were um stopped from going on trips. Um and can you hear me? I'm sorry. I feel like I'm getting bogged down.
We hear you just fine. You're good.
Okay, perfect. Um so with COVID, we didn't get to travel. Um kids that typically wanted to participate didn't come out because we weren't traveling and we were virtual. So this past year, we were lucky enough to be able to go overnight again and to be able to go to a couple of conferences in Boston, uh because we were really reluctant to try to go anywhere further. Um we're hoping that this year we might be able to sort of expand some of our Model UN offerings. One of the goals for this year for um that came from some of our students and our um really our um officers was that they really wanted to start to develop a JV varsity type program. Um and that's something we've kind of juggled with. Um we've had students that really want to push the envelope and really get sort of academically competitive. But then we also really pride ourselves in developing a program that um is welcoming and is accepting to people that have no experience. Um and so this year we were trying to balance both of them, um and we decided to sort of set up a new structure um for our officers. We have um two head delegates, um one, uh both of educational programming. Um one of them will be developing um educational programs for the upper level kids and other, the other um officer will be dealing and working on educational programming for new students. Um we also have a head delegate that's going to be focused on community outreach um and developing some community connections um and tying our community together as a Model UN club. And then we have um, we are also going to have a um a chair of fundraising because we know that all of our trips can be pretty challenging in terms of the um the cost of them. And then finally, we have um our secretary as Kelly and and a treasurer as well. So we're trying to move into a new direction after COVID and try to sort of up the ante a little bit with um and build upon some of successes we've had um in the past. So this year you're going to see it looks a little bit um different because we have, we're proposing three conferences this year. And that is really to fit in with um the goals like I had stated. So the first conference, um and I don't know, do you have that in front of you already or do you want me to project?
Yeah.
We do have it. Okay, perfect. Um the first one is um is the Empire Monk United Nations Conference. That's in November. Um we wanted to do a fall conference this past year. We didn't go until later in the year and we felt like we really wanted to hit the ground running. Um we've gone to Empire Monk a few years back and that's in um New York City. Um it is a small conference, which is nice because we like to sort of toggle between those sort of small intimate conferences and the large, really big. Um these are, it, Empire Monk's probably international as well, but a much larger um student base than some of the other ones. So this particular conference is from November sixteenth to twentieth. Um there's about four hundred high school students that will be there and we're planning on taking thirty students um and would bring three chaperones, myself, Mr. Matasoff, and then another um one additional teacher with us. Um for this trip, we're planning on traveling from um by train because that has worked pretty well in the past. Um and so going from cell station to um to Penn Station in New York City. Um this particular conference is on the NYU campus, um and so that requires us to find a hotel. Um in the past, we've stayed at the Holiday Inn Express in New York City and that's worked out quite well. Um but we would have to, once um the trip was approved, we'd have to start um looking for accommodations um that would be close to the NYC campus. And we're estimating that the cost for this would be around eight hundred dollars uh for four day is and three nights um in New York City. And of course, that's, it it's an expensive trip, given the fact that it's in New York. Um do you want me to keep going or you want to pause and ask questions about this one?
Um they're, they have a lot of similar themes. You can, I think, just do the whole slate of them.
Do all of them. Okay. Um the second trip is um our winter conference, which is um was our first conference last year. We went to the Boston University Invitational Conference in February. That was our first one last year. It it's really a a wonderful conference, but also really um easy and straightforward to get to. Um because it is um just in Boston, um it's right attached to the prue. Um it's a great conference by uh put on by BU students. Um and again, we bring thirty students and three chaperones. This one is a much cheaper conference. It is for um three days and two nights, so it's slightly shorter. And of course, the um hotel costs are just cheaper than in New York City. Um this is, we're envisioning this conference in particular being a good one for newer students to take part in. While we wouldn't exclude them from the New York City trip, um they would have to kind of hit the ground running, especially for freshmen. Um and so probably it would be more realistic for a lot of newer students to come into this February trip. But it's also the cost is a lot lower. So before you know that you love Model UN, you might want to try out one of these less expensive conferences. But of course, if students know they want to participate, they can obviously try out um for the earlier conferences as well. And then in the springtime, this is one of our all-time favorite conferences that we've gone to in the past. Um going to the Washington area Model United Nations Conference. Um this conference is put on by George Washington University. Um and it is a really great, large, international conference. Um it's a really fun one to go to because we've had the opportunities um to meet with diplomats from different countries, to go and visit think tanks, um to take tours of the capital, um to go on a walking tour. And so many of our students have never been to Washington DC. Um and so it's a really fun one for us to sort of explore the area with them as well. This is definitely one of the top conferences in the country. Um and that's why this cost, uh so this trip um is a five-day, four-night trip, which is similar to what it's been in the past. Um and then this trip, we would fly um presumably to Ronald Reagan International Airport or wherever we can get the easiest and cheapest flights in and out of. But again, um there, there isn't a oh, there isn't anything posted yet because it is next spring um for where the conference center will be. Um but it's been in some really fancy, nice hotels um in Washington DC in the past. So I imagine it'll be in one of those similarly, similarly swanky places um for this conference. Um and so the costs this year um with both the New York City trip and the DC trip are definitely expensive. Um but one of the things that I um do love is that we've added this fundraising chair. Um this is a new position for us. Um and Amani Somerville, who is a Metco student, um in a model of my, a member of Model UN. Um she is chairing this committee um and has spoke out in the past about trying to find um opportunities to bring down the cost so that all students are able to participate um and um have the same opportunities. And so we were really excited to have her take charge of this new position. So she has led some fundraising that we're going to be doing um at the high school next week. Um as uh with a um with a waterless car wash, we're going to be detailing cars on Wednesday night if anyone needs to bring their car by. Um and then we're also going to have, be there both days of Heritage Days doing a variety of different activities. Um so we're, we're working really hard to try to do some fundraising this year that would bring down the cost um for all students. So I'm happy to open it up to to questions or anything else.
Thank you so much. Excited. Any questions?
No, I just, I really, I really like the idea of like, like you said, the analogy JV and bars. I think that that's a great idea. I always kind of wondered how kids first kind of stepped into this, maybe it had been over their head, having a a less intensive, inviting cards to get to the, to join. So I I like that idea. It sounds like extreme policies would allow for that to take place. So I like, I like that idea a lot.
And I think it fits in nicely as um Dr. McGuire mentioned about that global studies pathways. I know that Model UN is envisioned to be a part of this, and I do think that that would provide a great opportunity for underclassmen as well um to be able to sort of like feed into um that concentration, so to speak, that pathway. So um I'm excited. And in having so many officers as sort of a board, we're hoping is going to really help sort of um give us the opportunity that we didn't have before. We didn't have enough people to be able to manage both aspects at the same time. So we're hopeful that that that's going to um work out well this year.
Um no, I was going to ask how it was society, what to go to a chance, but I kind of answered that question. So, yeah.
Yeah, we, and we definitely have students that will want to do all three potentially. Um we definitely have those that want to do two when we have two conferences. Um we will, we're envisioning having to do a tryout like we've done in the past um to try to sort of pick those varsity um teams. But again, it does sort of shift as students are doing sports and other activities. They can't, you know, do the fall, but they can do the spring. And so it just provides some other opportunities for students that might not be able to fit it in um at one time or another.
Uh just one, I just said one question. I know you, you talked about the cost for some of these. Have we looked at using like a little travel agent to try to cut down on the cost or help find cheaper hotels or flights? Or is that usually done by you, Mr. Mattesau?
I'm sorry, you broke up just a little bit. Could you sit, could you say the question again?
Yeah, for the, for the travel bookings, like the hotels and the flights. Do you um work with like a little travel agent to try to cut down on the cost or is that more something like you and Mr. Mattesau?
Um travel has been a challenge and I'll, and I'm like, I'll, I'll throw in, I'll throw in this little this little piece. It's, it's hard to book without um having a credit card to be able to book. Um and so that's definitely been a challenge for us. We have tried to go through a um travel agent in the past because that's been the easiest way for us to pay the, the bill for it. Um so it's, it's been a challenge. Um but we do try to secure the lowest cost we can. It just would determine sort of, you know, getting everyone on the same flights and things like that. I think I answered your question.
No, you did. I know it's been challenging to do in the past, so just curious if we've been proven anyway, but no, that'll take it.
Yeah, and I don't, and I don't know if I, I think it's more of a, of a town issue, but you know, having, having a school credit card that you can book some of these things on, I know has been a hot topic for some time, but especially for, for programs like this, it would really, I'll just put my pitch in that it would make it really a lot easier to to do some of this. We'll get that on record.
So I'm gonna, I'm actually, that's probably. I might as well add, I might as well add to that. Can we, can we look at um these, uh, tools, can we get these online, remember? We're in like nineteen eighty two or four, like completing a form, getting signatures. I don't know why we can't get them electric, some somehow electronic. Every, all of the, well, we see that, we, the request for um trips, yes, it's this, it's this form, it's like a PDF file that's like handwritten, it's not even built in online. So it's like handwritten. Um and then it has to go through the bottom, how many signatures are like three or four signatures? So it would be great if we have some sort of. Like six, maybe six signatures. I just, I think it would be great to be able to have it electronic. I just, I think it would be great to be able to have it electronic. Dream life. I know we had in the past, it actually came up, it comes up every year, I think. Some group wasn't aware that a thick of signatures need to be done because we got stuck on some desk. If it's all electronic, then it should, I guess, that kind of works. Just I, I might as well help you with your effort.
We can all just make some few improvements that will make things go a little easier.
All right. That said, I will make a motion to
I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, to approve the out-of-state trip to New York City uh, from November sixteen, twenty twenty-two to November twentieth. Second. Hi. Uh, yeah, I think I did it in Washington from March twenty-second to make a motion to approve the out-of-state trip to Washington DC from March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three to April. Three twenty-eight.
What are the, what are the dates for DC?
The dates for DC um, is March twenty-eighth to April second.
Sorry.
It's right on the application. It is on the application.
Sorry, just in our backup had the wrong date. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the out-of-state filter to Washington DC from March twenty-eighth to April third, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, yep.
April second, twenty twenty-three. Second. Hi. I have the dates for this one. Uh, make a motion to approve overnight filter to Boston uh, on February tenth, twenty twenty-three to February twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Bye. Hi.
Right. Thank you so much.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, can I just ask one quick question? I know in the past um, you've wanted updates as we've booked our travel and hotel lodging. Would you like me to come back and present on that, or would an email with that information suffice?
I think an email is perfect.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Some of that was like potentially COVID-related or cancellations, but yeah, keep us in the loop.
Will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next we have an acceptance gift, uh, Dr. McGuire. So Christine Joss from Campbell for Blackwood Books has donated a signed copy of Abuela, Don't Forget Me by Rex Ogul to the high school library. Uh, many of our students have read the memoir Lunch in Eighth Grade by this author. So now they have a copy too, who's newest book in the high school library. Very happy to have this.
Make a motion. Make a motion that the school committee accepts the donation of Abuela, Don't Forget Me.
Thank you. Hi.
Thank you. Leadership for Christopher Campbell.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Great night, night with a lot of celebrations. Just from the, use some updates, uh, quiet days of summer that the school department does not sleep. A lot of people working, doing good work as we approach the next. Want to give a few updates. First thing on our new principal, Scott Williams, had a meet and greet with families. And pleasantly surprised he did a little hot night, it's middle of summer. Uh, we had a decent turnout, but it also has many people on Facebook Live. I want to thank all the folks that were able to turn out. Really good opportunity. Also often ice cream and social, and a lot to, to. Just want to thank all those that could turn out, really, really all. John Ranelini, with their parent, Paul. So impressive guy, and it was just an opportunity for our, for you to meet him. And um, Miss Old Doctor Principal, Principal Chakers will be doing that in August. Next thing we want, we're real loud right now, is hiring. After the last two years, you know, the good news is that almost all our positions are filled. A lot of applicants, there's a lot of interest in being in situ, which is incredible to our district. Teachers over here, the administrators, committee, and just the community. It's a place people want to be, a lot of people leaving other places to want to be here. It's a compliment to us, I mean, every new staff that's hired and I'm just very impressed with what our principal is doing right now in the committees and reinforce how we qualify. I'm going to share that, let's be proud of what we're doing this summer. Also, Ms. Bristol is doing a lot of work on our upcoming leadership retreat. Which will be with our apartment chairs, principals, and some central office team. Kind of set the tone for the year on our goals, our vision, and a lot of the feedback we got from the thought exchange, community, onto tagging some of the issues and becoming bestest in the world. So we'll keep you apprised that, that planning is ongoing and very important. We also have five uh, negotiations, five unions still ongoing. So we negotiate with each individual um, union. And I want to thank uh, Barney and Dr. Dutch for being on the administrative committee for doing that. It's time concerning as those involved in all that on the side of the table. But they're going very well and we'll keep you apprised as we make progress on those. So far, so good. Some, uh, some more potential good news that the uh, Massachusetts is one of a handful of states to continue uh, providing free meals for all students. Next school year, regardless of family's level of income. Huntingford Initiative has not done deal yet. We want to say that um, it's been approved, the hundred and ten million dollar provision included in the state budget, which is passed both the state and senate. And now it just needs to go big, uh, signing begin July. Hopefully we'll get the good news on that. And then recently, uh, I want to thank uh, Mr. Gates for attending the financial forecast meeting. A very important meeting we had recently. Those meetings go on, you know, over the summer and we're already starting to talk budget and, you know, financial outlook for the district and our vision. And we've got some good news that um, the town was appropriated two hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. Two thousand, two hundred thousand thirty-six hundred forty-two. And um, being, we often talk about transparency, I want to share that tonight. What we're going to spend that money with and additional money that we need. Again, I credit Dr. Dutch and Mr. Boudreaux, our partnership with the town, the financial forecast to be collaborating on that, seeing how much time we have to get schools good. So just some things that become sense to all of you, but we're anticipating, looking ahead to. And uh, vehicle fuel. Obviously costing more now with gas prices approximately twelve thousand five hundred ninety-two we're allocating to that. Uh, there's another cost that we put five, nine thousand five hundred dollars towards electricity, nine thousand. These are based off of last year's increases. Uh, a bus lease, fifty-four thousand dollars more. As more reviews coming, we're getting buses. And really, really good news is we were able to um, put aside twenty thousand dollars to put in a special education stability fund, civilization fund, excuse me, uh, that has a hundred thousand dollars, contributed by the town and the community. Ordered on my Atami U a couple of years back. So we wanted to show the good stewards of the money that we want to continue to give to that. So the school department has allocated, you know, will allocate twenty thousand dollars. Again, this is pending Atami U. That's some of the good news. Next up, uh, the MSBA update on new school. I want to thank uh, Slim Blom for being several hours as part of some committee looking at our operations uh, OPM manager um, for that. And we had seven respondents apply for that. This is, these are, this is the group that looks out for the district's best interests. Alice Frost hires the architect, does all the consulting, advocates for us itself for the financial. Um, runs the feasibility study, the public relations assistant. Really huge important hire. And um, three were shortlisted to be interviewed. So the committee met, looked at just like hiring a new educator and being important. We spent several hours looking at the uh, the applicants. And three were interviewed, another tense interview process with three candidates. Uh, company called Vertex was chosen unanimously, so that's a good sign. We need a blind vote. And that company was number one on all, all of the subcommittee's radar unanimously. And some good news is, some people may be familiar with their work. They are, have experience locally with doing, it was the old campus for the um, senior center. Most recently, and the community building, firing, uh, police. So uh, it's done really good work already here, so we felt that familiarity. There'll be a meeting August first with MSBA, in which they interview the OPM, kind of make sure, validate our decision. So we'll get news out after that meeting to the community on validating that they are the next OPM. And then we'll look forward from there. Once that's approved, we begin the process of soliciting a designer architect, which is exciting. And that's, that time, the OPM also share a timeline with us. So right now, I know there's questions, what's next, when the, the OPM will help us. That was part of their presentation to make a comprehensive timeline from when the school shelves are on the ground, school finished, all the way back to what do we do next. So I have some more information on that. Sure, if at some point it comes immediately, that's a question. But we'll be, we'll be in the forums, there'll be community input, and we'll all have a process. That's good news. We're moving, again, this meeting, mine is a month ahead of um, originally scheduled. So thanking everybody for their work on that. We're heading to schedule on every month we can save on this. Saves a month or two opening a school actually. Uh, some capital projects, again, we, we made a commitment to the town that we would act on old sitting capital projects that we voted on approved, but um, action was taken. And um, although things are slow with catching up with program supplies, we're making good progress. Exciting that we started demolition on the Central High School new locker, phase one. Three-phase process here. It's going to be absolutely beautiful when it's done. First phase is the, the poison goes back, the new lockers to go into for present class, for much daily use. There was a small amount of asbestos found and uh, during the demolition, so we go through a process. But dangerous to the rest of the school, where anybody in the building now is corded off. And so we're taking it all the safety precautions. But what we do, what's next, what's called a maintenance. And it's, they come in, look at it already, come and remove it, and then they complete. So bad news on that is uh, that the project's been delayed approximately a month. So now we, we, uh, we fix it September thirty. So I think the moral of that story is we'll do renovations. Watch out when you start tearing things down, you're going to find stuff. Wasn't a complete surprise, the company we usually does handle asbestos, again, the demolition crew, so it's, it saves us some time. Uh, the Wamptuck Protocol, if you've come by there at all, if I see it's on. So um, we're happy about that. Materials have been ordered and we're waiting on an updated timeline. The target uh, goal of completion at the end of October, so it's not just a target. So that's exciting progress. We go over at Wamptuck today and the uh, we're replacing all the old nineteen fifties, we have phone lines and phone system. So that will have an updated phone system. So again, um, as we talk about the new school building process for pushing and hatterly, we want to make sure that we're taking care of Wamptuck and Jacob's High School and even Gates. This is, as we'll hear, you know, Wamptuck a few times, that's our oldest building actually. And we want to make sure that that lasts a long while. So we're proactively doing these things and giving our support to towns voting on these capital plans. So that entire uh, process is being converted from analog to analog, make it digital. So um, hopefully the community will benefit from uh, responses and we'll have some, we can do some more of these stuff. I know that the, the school and the staff are very excited about that. They were here today working and will be completed by the start of school. Uh, Wamptuck parking lot unfortunately won't be done. That's why we're excited about getting done for the summer as well. Right now, the consternation committee wants us to do what's called a pair review. Something we anticipate, something that's necessary, so that takes a little more time. That being said, this delays putting the project out to bid, which as a result gets a timeline into winter, which hits back and brings in not the usual oil gas. Good news is we'll get all that done and be ready to hit the ground running next summer. Still on target to be done, just a delay. Stairs, the permit has been applied by the contract for stairs, 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 we completed in August. That was on time and happened too. And some more good news that I've been talking about before is the replacement of all cameras at high school. This is important for a lot of reasons. Cameras were old, they were initially put in, where there were many blind spots. So these new ones are high-tech, current technology best around. And software with that is second to none. So access to information, we do need that. It's also public safety improvement. Talk about intruders, safety and things like that. The administration having access to those cameras and being able to um, look at things and identify um, doors open, things like that, maybe a cancer. So that's exciting. It's happening now, we've done before some of those. I wanted to add, these will all be uh, digital and wireless. Pretty, pretty impressive. We're also replacing nineteen school buses. More good news, eleven buses roll off the box this year. And the purchase and deployment, I know Ms. Bristol and Mr. Long brought the seventy, hundred, seven fifty uh, new homeworks to move to our uh, one-on-one program, which no child will have to pay for here anymore. Finally, uh, shout out to uh, the town and school district uh, received a distinguished facility award recently. This was a, based upon the situ athletic fields project that was done. It was recognized by the American Sports Builders Association, ASBA, with a distinguished facility award in a multi-field category. So congratulations, this was my times for anybody that was, uh, the town, the school set that was involved. They're obviously beautiful, magnificent. Which shows you the investment um, and the town is being noticed and that quality of work is exemplary that this group acknowledged that. So I wanted to bring that up. So now, our project is now considered a finalist for a facility of the year on. So in this roster, you don't know, we'll be in that. And um, we'll find out if our project is selected in the December. I think that's uh, all I have to say. Questions? Happy or I'd be glad to hear for any capital questions.
Question on the, the cameras, is that um, grant money?
I'll ask, I'll be different to Dr. Dutch. Dr. Dutch, you get that question?
I did. Um, the funds for that are through our capital. It's within, within the technology capital line item.
That's what I said. I shared it off.
I think you could hope to put like a hundred thousand.
I'm not saying that. We've been finding, we've reached down to that, but we really thought the one-on-one thing, yeah, that too, we have. Was it just, we're just doing the high school? But you know, I was planning to look at all the knowledge. All the old ones out on.
I have a question, sorry. I wrote all these notes down, we'll try to explain them. Um, with the OPM selection and everything in the timeline, you're in center earlier in, you know, referring to this potential school building project, I guess, for um, you know, community conversations. What should be, what do we call that if we were so far along in the game? I think, I mean, I think you have questions about the next steps.
Yeah. So I, I think, I appreciate everyone's patience at this time. A lot of patients of the OPMs on the work once. Like I said, they're our guiding ship. They've done, you know, in jazz contests, why we picked this group. They have so much experience with MSBA-specific projects and elementary schools. So they'll, they're a major company, so they'll come in, guide us, then we'll start meeting the building committee. And part of that will be community information. Start having forums, question and answers, we'll be helping out. All that's coming pretty quickly. By the end of the summer, we'll start that process. So the next big step is to get them on board to help guide us with all of that. So that they can So that they can help us answer those questions, they've been through it, we'll get a timeline out to people and we'll start with a kind of plan and outline to show. Website will be devoted, a space devoted to the new website on that, so just ask for a little more patience with people. But after August first, when they're hired, bill log is, beginning of school year, things will start to start.
That's what, at least it's done, play off. So proud of, I think it came to the town, parents.
It's, that's a good news, they have, they've done this before, but we said this will be do, we'll be, we'll be each other.
Glad we're getting to those capital projects.
It's fun, it's fun to see them, checking them off, yeah.
All right, um, so we don't have any minutes for backup, if you can't go. Hold off on. Warrants?
We do. We, we've got four warrants, so.
There you are.
Where's that voice coming from?
It's on the yacht again.
It's always the same weather.
Yeah.
It's in the cave.
All right, um, so the first warrant is S two-two-zero-zero-six-two-eight. Uh, local funds are six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. Uh, I'll identify, I'll identify the significant uh amounts as usual. Private school tuition was hu- one hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-four cents, all for Cardinal Cushing. Uh, collaborative tuition for the South Shore Collaborative, two hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. Contract services for heat to commercial boiler, twelve thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty cents. That was for various repairs to uh the heating systems. Um, nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars for contracted services, other to inland professional. Um, those of you who've been by the Cushing School, you know the outdoor tank um for irrigation, that was the old oil tank, uh, had a leak. So that's uh been fixed, it is covered by insurance and will be reimbursed to the district at, at some point in the future. Building and administration, sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-two cents. That's two for Kada Camera and that's for the camera work at Situate High School. Uh, the copier contract service, fif- thirteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-three cents. And that is for uh copier overage as we closed out the year. So I don't know if you have questions about that particular warrant, there are three others, but I'll give you an opportunity to ask any questions there.
I have a question about the fence and cushioning.
Okay, um, no, it won't be there for, it won't be there forever. Uh, we have to wait for, it's because it's uh controlled construction, we've got to wait for a final inspection and then we're allowed to remove it. So hopefully before school starts, it will be removed.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, the next warrant is S twenty-two-zero-zero-six-two-nine. Um, out of uh a capital fund, the Situate High School locker room, uh, room capital, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. I think that's self-explanatory. Uh, out of Esser three, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-four cents. You saw a presentation last school committee meeting on the new uh curriculum. Uh, so that's what we're, we're paying for and where it's coming from. From our LEA, private school tuition, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-five cents to several different private schools for special education. Uh, out of the curriculum line item, fifty-five thousand, five hundred and ten dollars for reading curriculum, that's the balance of that. Cost for the uh reading curriculum that was coming from Esser. Uh, electric utilities, forty-four thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. Uh, contract services, a variety of different uh software applications, twenty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Uh, central administration supply, thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and five dollars, that is for copy paper uh for the coming year. Uh, so that closes out that particular warrant and significant uh items, any questions there?
Okay.
Okay, uh, next item, uh, total was uh warrant was S two-two-zero-seven-zero-seven. The total was fifty thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirteen cents. Two large items, uh, central administration, thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and thirteen cents. Uh, to Tyler Technologies and that is for the uh software contribution to the town. For uh Munis Software, which is payroll, uh, and our accounting for uh purchase owners and requisitions. And then eleven thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars for curriculum contract services for Atlas, which is our uh curriculum tracking. Uh, on our, on our website that, that we utilize. And then the last warrant is S two-two-zero-seven-one, zero-seven-one-four. Total of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty cents. Uh, large ticket item, central administration contract services, fifty-five thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-two cents. For software for frontline and Aspen, Aspen is our student management software. And frontline is our uh staff management for attendance, vacations and uh all of that tracking information. Uh, the second was IT contract services for twenty-four thousand, five hundred and five dollars to Wally and Comcast. Uh, Comcast is for our internet service and then Wally is, was for um IT technology, mostly uh display, display, interactive display units. And then curriculum contract services to Class Link, Scenario, Smart E D U. Smart E D U is our uh professional development application. Um, Class Link and Scenario, Heidi could probably tell you what Class Link does better, better than I can, I know it's a suite of uh software. Um, so those are the only large items uh there. Any questions?
I assume these are all twenty-twenty-three expenses, correct?
Say that again?
All of these warrants are for twenty-twenty-three, correct?
Um, no, the first two were twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you so much, Dr. Dutch.
You're welcome.
Oh, correspondent, Joey Dogg, he's already checked out. Um, correspondence. And it's just a mass. Yeah. Conference request, he really wants to go.
They extended the early deadline.
I don't, I, I would go, I would.
No, do you go, do you go, I would only go for you like. Yeah. I know, we've never attended it, I've been always talking about it, it's like, it's hard for us, it's hard for anyone, it's like.
Play in the middle of the work. Yeah, it's.
They always talk about it, I just didn't know super tennis, yeah, I don't know if you make up those conferences, I don't know if you go.
Yes, it's typically school community members and our super tennis is usually usually. I would, I would, I would like school people otherwise. Because some bold combined between us, we both give us.
Yeah, it's like.
We do workshops, we should say, very workshop, just as good.
I think they said you could buy one, like be able to share, it was actually online, but both via conference. So you could sign up and you could share it, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that was just a online, I'm not, I'm not, I think they did. Kind of different person today.
Talk about not being seen. These are really worth watching right now. Uh, other business, anybody, anything they wanted to. For agenda items. Our August fifteenth meeting, going to be our retreat today. It is.
Just.
I'm in the workshop.
When's our next? When's our next?
It's the twenty-ninth of August, it's our next traditional. There's nothing else? Uh, I can take motion to adjourn.
Oops, second.
Oh, okay.
Bye, bye.